And call this comprehensive plan meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Baxter?
Here.
Commissioner Flores?
Mayor Marino?
Here.
Commissioner Powell? Commissioner Sacks?
Here.
Commissioner Wise?
Here.
And Commissioner Woodward?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've asked Commissioner Flores to lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please.
It'll be in English, yes. All rise. Oh God, we give into your hands the business of this commission. Guide our new and unfinished task to completion. Also help us bring our unresolved problems to a fair and just resolution. Help us to make decisions that will benefit all of our citizens. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have proof of publication?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
And we need a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Wise, a second from Commissioner Woodward, all in favor, all opposed. See that that motion carries six zero. Any additions, deletions, substitutions, modifications, you name it, we got it. Patrick? Who's doing it? Tui?
We do have one. Tui has one to add.
Okay.
There are no changes to the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. There's only one, which is the withdrawal, the last item, which is the eternal light. The last item used, not the add-on.
And do we need a motion to accept the withdrawal?
Four A one.
Do we need a motion to accept the withdrawal?
Yes, we do, ma'am.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Flores, a second from Commissioner Wise, all in favor, all opposed. See that that motion carries six zero to withdraw four A one from the agenda. Okay. So may I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Flores, a second from Commissioner Woodward, to see that the agenda has been amended and approved. All in favor? All opposed? See that that motion carries six zero. Okay. We're on to public hearing. First item on the agenda is Westgate Boulevard CRA bonus density text. Would anybody like a presentation?
We have one card.
We have one card. Okay, we will take the one card.
Jackson Risbira?
Jackson Risbira, 221 Royal Poncyana Way. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the commission. My name is Jackson Risbira, and I'm here on behalf of the Frisbee Group and our partners at Terra Group. We are investing into the CRA through our redevelopment of the Palm Beach Kennel Club site, and we've seen firsthand the positive momentum building in this area. We want to voice our support for the CRA's proposal to expand the density bonus pool. This initiative will help attract high-quality investment, encourage smart growth, and further the county's goals of promoting housing, economic vitality, and reinvesting in the urban core. We greatly appreciated the CRA's partnership and leadership and look forward to continuing to invest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I haven't heard anyone requesting a presentation, so may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Wise, a second from the Vice Mayor, all in favor, all opposed. See that that motion? This is a motion to transmit and a motion to receive and file, correct?
Yes.
Do we need to amend the motion, or is that okay, that I read it into the record?
It's okay that you read into the record. We have both now.
All in favor? All opposed? See that that motion carries six zero. We are on the water supply facilities work plan. Anybody would like a presentation? All righty. May I get a motion to transmit and a motion to receive and file?
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Woodward, a second from Commissioner Sacks, all in favor, all opposed. See that that motion carries six zero. We are on the recreation and open space element updates. Would anybody like a presentation?
I would like a short presentation.
Okay. May we have a short presentation on that one, please?
Yes, ma'am. So this item is the recreation open space element, the Rose updates. And we have with us, from the Parks and Rec Department, Bob Hamilton, and also Jennifer Cirillo, Director. And I'll turn that over to them.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Commissioners, for the record, Jennifer Cirillo, the Director of Palm Beach County Parks Recreation. Bob Hamilton's going to go through a very brief overview presentation of the updates to the recreation and open space element, and we'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. So we haven't updated the recreation open space elements since 2012, really. And there's three reasons why we haven't updated since that date. One had to do with the fact that we hadn't had a master plan, which we just finalized in 2024. We just recently created a Parks Foundation. And the level of service planning horizon, which currently is from 2012 to 2030, is now extending out to, we're proposing 2023 to 2025. Excellent. So it was really seven changes to the recreation open space element. Most of them are administrative, slight changes to the park definitions, new policy for the maintenance of a parks master plan, new policy to explore funding sources, and that's really tied to our Parks Foundation. We also updated a level of service. Like I mentioned previously, it's currently the horizons 2012 to 2030, and we're looking to move that from 2023 to 2045. We also have a new policy to encourage green infrastructure, and we also revised the map series. So really just seven minor changes that we think, administrative changes to the element.
Hold on one second. Attorney Hellfan, do you want to identify yourself while you're on the screen? Okay. Well, Commissioner Sacks has asked for her to identify herself now, so. Okay. We'll wait till the next presentation. I'm sorry to interrupt. Right ahead.
That's okay. That really concludes our overview, our presentation. We're happy to take any questions you have about the updates to the recreation open space element. And then, you know, Tui, I don't know if you wanted to go over the staff's recommendation.
So staff's recommending approval, and the Planning Commission has approved it unanimously by a vote of ten to zero. Then there'll be two motions, one to transmit, and the other will be to receive and file the business impact estimate.
May I get a motion, please?
Second.
Commissioner Sacks, your light is on.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all of the staff, and especially Ms. Cirillo, for what we're doing with our parks. I think we even got an award for the beauty and quality of our parks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our team is excellent. We appreciate the comments.
And I'll move.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We'll give the motion to Commissioner Sacks, a second to Commissioner Woodward, all in favor, all opposed. See that that motion carries six zero. We're on to Nova Life RV Park. This is a motion to transmit. Vice Mayor, this is in your district. Would you like a presentation?
No, I think it's in a great place.
Okay. Would you like to make the motion?
I will move.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a very good discussion yesterday with staff and with Ms. Cirillo. And I think what we're going to do, what I'd like to do, is to encourage more and more RV parks that we have, because this is something that is just part of the beauty of Palm Beach County. And with that, I'd like for us to review our ordinances about off-road vehicles on county land that are not paved. Because this goes along, if we're going to promote more and more people coming here and enjoying our open spaces, then we need to take a look at all of our ordinances with regard, also to hunting. I want to make sure that we don't have, if there's any hunting ordinances, we'll make sure that we don't have any hunting ordinances in our county. But everything that goes along with the beauty of RV parks. And I had a good discussion with staff on this yesterday. So I want to thank you very much. And I would go ahead and move something. I know I'll defer to the District Commissioner on this. Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to...
Commissioner Flores, your light is also on.
I was just going to make the motion.
So my comments were just regarding our conversation regarding the water. And my question originally was, is this going to be septic, or is this going to be sewer? And I understand that this is going to be sewer, and they're going to be connecting to our water lines. So I'm excited about that. I want to make sure that our water quality, especially near the lake, is good. So thank you for doing so. Appreciate it.
And Attorney Hellfan, were you on for this particular discussion?
I'm sorry. That is not Attorney Hellfan.
I'm sorry.
I believe she's a consultant with...
That's for the last two items.
Oh, my gosh, she looks just like her.
Thank you.
She does look similar.
Never mind. Any questions? We had a motion and a second. Motion was from the Vice Mayor, a second was from Commissioner Sacks, all in favor, all opposed. See that that motion carries six zero.
I'm mayor.
She could be her twin.
I may.
Sure.
Just for the record.
We're so out of order today, it doesn't matter.
It's okay. Kevin McGinley, and we do agree to all the conditions. And I brought my son here today, a recent graduate, and I wanted to show him how hard I work, and... Does that backfire on me?
You know, all the hard work was done, all the heavy lifting was done before he got here. If he didn't know what the answer was, he wouldn't be here.
That's just what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. All right. So, Patrick?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm just turning this one over to you, four B one. I'm turning it over to you.
That's okay. But I want to clarify the point previously made on relation to discussion of off-road vehicles on county land. Just want to make sure I understand the board's direction, just looking for an evaluation of what we have on the books and what our practices are, as it relates to whether it's our parks' property or property we own in general that might be in preservation. Is that the board's intent and direction?
I'm sorry. The discussion revolves around what else we can do, or what is the status of the rules right now in the county with regard to RV parks and what you can and cannot do on county open land. And I think that includes all kinds of things, such as off-road vehicles, hunting, fires, campfires. We are encouraging, and I think it's good, that we encourage people to come and park with their, you know, their campers and everything. Something I've never done in my life, but I've always wanted to. But we're encouraging that. But I don't really know what it is that we can and cannot do on these park places on county land. Since I represent all county land, I'd like to know. So, very good, Patrick. Should we set a date that the staff can come back and report on the status of the ordinances around these RV parks?
I think it might be, and the board could take it up later. We could provide you background on what we have in the code that relates to RV parks, uses within it, things of that sort. If I provide you that memo, that information, and if the board wanted to discuss further, we could set a time down the road.
Okay. I think that would be, if it's okay with my colleagues, I think it'd be fair to get a report. It can be, you know, on email, and we could review it. And then we could decide whether or not we like it, we want to change it, or we want to modify it. But this way, we know what's going, what the status of the rules are. And I'll give you an example. West of 441 in West Boca, there was a, it's an open, it's an open park, it's an open field owned by the county. And there used to be sort of a setup paintball field by the kids. And there was a lady there, they called her Mama. She was sitting at a table, and she'd be selling the, I don't want to say bullets, but the paint for the kids to play. Just sort of a setup thing, you know, not that many years ago. I'm sure there are many places like this, and I'd just like to see what the status is, since I represent these areas. So, Patrick, that would be fine, if you could just let us know. And again, I mentioned campfires, hunting, recreational off-track vehicles, stuff like that, in writing, and then we can decide what we want to do. Thank you, Mr. Edder. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay. Now, if we've concluded that, we will go on to four B one, and I will give it over to Patrick. This is the countywide transportation master plan update.
And good morning again. Want to give the board an update on where we are to date as we've completed phase one of the four phases that we're engaging in, moving into phase two now, of the countywide transportation master plan. I think you're all aware, we've had 12 public outreach meetings through the course of the last month and a half or so, moving into the next phase of really digesting a lot of the information, whether it's feedback we received from the public, the data, things of that sort. I'm going to hand it over to Tui to introduce the folks here from WSP, who's been doing heavy lifting on the work and share with you what we've got to date and where we're going in the next few months as well.
Thank you, Patrick. Yes, we have today with us, Claudia Bellato, the Project Manager for WSP, and also Victor Dover from Dover Cold, the Planning Consultant. So they will, for the first item, they will be giving us a progress report as to what has happened since they started July 1st, till now, what's currently being in the works now with the stage two, which is the envisioned stage of the four stages, and then also what's coming up in the next two to three months as they do the analytical part of their review and also their modeling. We also have Mariah DeCo here. She is the Deputy Project Manager from WSP, and also Keshid Mohammed from Planning. So Claudia?
Thank you. Yes, and I can't see the slides. I'm not sure if I should be able to see those. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Thank you. I'm Claudia Bellato, as Tui said, the Project Manager for the countywide transportation master plan. And it sounds like I may have a doppelganger, based on what I can pick up from the conversation.
Oh, you absolutely have a doppelganger, an attorney in our office. And that was when I saw you, and my glasses are a little not clear today. That's exactly where I thought you were, so I apologize for that.
No, no, no problem at all. So as Tui said, we're going to provide a brief update of what we've accomplished to date and where we are headed next. And then we'll have time for questions. So to begin, you know, this is a look at our overall schedule. I think this is something that you have all seen before, but the star represents where we currently are in the process. And we've had a very busy couple of months focused on what we were calling our discovery phase. We've had 12 public meetings and other engagement with the public through groups that we've met with, as well as an intensive effort to collect data from all of the municipalities. So we'll begin proceeding through the slides, and I'll touch on some of those highlights. So, oh, you can go back one. Here we go. As a starting point, you know, our outreach efforts were far-reaching in nature. All of you were integral to these efforts. We were able to meet with you. You all have been a big part of driving engagement in the study, and we're very appreciative of that. In addition, we have presented to other organizations that represent different interests in the community, including the Palm Beach Economic Council and the City Management Association. And we have touched each of the 39 municipalities that is part of the study, as well as more than 70 stakeholder groups. We also launched a website, pbcmoves.com, which has many active users, a lot of specific subscribers, and we are able to leverage it to provide ongoing updates and send information. Next slide. So for our initial round of outreach, we included a survey that was public, and we were able to target that to some different audiences. So it was conducted in several languages. It was directed in several ways. We had some questions that were specific to technical stakeholders, some focused on the business community, and some that were general in nature, and also important for elected officials to respond to so we could understand the needs of each of your constituencies. We received over 1,500 responses, and those questions, which we'll be able to provide summaries of, those are available online, includes things like what are your high priorities in terms of transportation challenges, the needs in terms of improvement type, and how we can address what you see as the future for Palm Beach County. Across the 12 public meetings that really just ended last week, we had our most recent public meetings. They began in early September, and we had a couple that we added in October, had over 400 attendees across all. They were open houses, so there was a presentation, but there was also the ability to interact one-on-one. There was polling conducted at those meetings, and so we were able to keep all of that as feedback, as well as comments received that might have been written down on maps. And we compile all of that information, along with our surveys, to look at the themes that we need to incorporate as we move forward. There's also a sampling of the locations of those various meetings that is on the right-hand side of the screen. And you all were very helpful to us in securing those locations and getting people there, so thank you for that. Next slide. So some of our key findings, and I think one thing that was very reassuring to us as we continue with the study is there is a lot of consistency in themes across the county, even though we are dealing with some very unique contexts. So traffic congestion, major challenge, right? That's why we're all here, and there is certainly consensus on that. There is a need for better east-west connectivity. Improved transit options are desired in some locations. I think, again, that depends on the densities and the types of movements that we see. There is widespread support for safer and complete streets that meet the needs of all users. And there is a recognition that we need to coordinate improvements with our land use and with other environmental concerns. Technology was really what we heard about the most. People are excited about all of the things that are emerging and how that can have a positive impact on the system. And that ranges from things like electric vehicles and automated vehicles that can operate as shuttles, all the way to things like smart signals and the ability to leverage private companies that are making investments in communities with technologies and looking at ways that we can bring those types of solutions to Palm Beach County to have a positive impact on the transportation system. Next slide. You know, I mentioned that we have been engaging with all of the municipalities, as well as the county staff. There are so many plans. There's a lot of work that has been done to date. And as you all know, our goal is not to supplant that, it's to gather all of that information so we can take this up a level and focus on the things that the county can do countywide to put these plans in a position to be implemented and to implement larger-scale solutions that will connect what's envisioned in each city. So, again, consistent themes, and those were themes that I just talked about, across these plans. And we were able to collect over 100 planning documents that we're in the process of reviewing. We saw those themes of east-west connectivity, the importance of safety and security, mode choice. So, again, those complete streets that we're designing for all users, cars, transit riders, those who may leverage e-bikes, scooters, golf carts, horses, as well as those who are walking. And we want everybody to feel safe while they're doing so. So you can see just a sampling of the types of plans that we collected and that we are reviewing to incorporate relevant points into all of the actions that we are looking at at the countywide level. Next slide, please. Collecting all of this data and identifying these themes has led to us to identify what we are calling the four pillars of the countywide transportation master plan. So the four pillars that we believe reflect all of the data that we've collected and everything we've heard from the public is what you see in front of you. Safety, connectivity, technology, and mobility choice. So all of the recommendations that we put forth through the plan can be housed under these categories. You see some examples here underneath each one of what that can mean. But this is also still evolving as part of the conversation, right? But when we put something under the umbrella of safety, it would really look at all of those modes. You know, we want zero incidents. That's what everyone strives for. There's a lot of safety work that's being done, safety plans that reflect this. We want to improve bike and pedestrian safety. On the one hand, everybody should feel safe biking and walking. And in addition, we should be investing in things that create safe spaces for them to walk within. So that's one of the things that the plan will look at. Connectivity looks at those connections that we still need to complete the system and to relieve the congested corridors. Technology, I touched on a few of the things that that would encompass, but it's everything from intelligent transportation system investments for signals, for real-time information, to leveraging emerging technologies like advanced air mobility and automated vehicles and other opportunities for last-mile transit connectivity. And then choice, which is providing these different modes in a way that they're accessible to all residents of the county. Next slide, please. So as part of our next steps, you know, we have now collected a lot of data. So we are evaluating future growth and the impacts that that has on the transportation system. Based on that analysis, we're then able to look at recommended goals, objectives, and policies, as well as principles, that will implement the transportation vision. And we will look specifically at corridors and subareas that are hotspots, and we'll be able to test solutions and how they may positively impact performance so that we ultimately come to a set of recommendations collectively that everyone can buy into and can prioritize for implementation. The other graphic on the slide is a progress summary that we do make available on our website. So you all and anyone who's participating in the study can have access to that at any time. And I also want to touch on land use, which I know is something that is very relevant to the plan. Many of you are interested in how it is incorporated into the plan. So we'll talk about some of those specifics here. And Victor Dover, who is also with us and has been engaged in previous land use activities in the county, and will be doing this as part of our effort, can also... in the county, can all, and will be doing this as part of our effort, can also address any questions. But first and foremost, land use is absolutely integrated in the work that we are doing in the countywide transportation master plan because land use is what drives trips and for this, right? So we look at where population is located, where employment is located. That is what is the majority of the travel, but not the only thing. There are also and meeting needs. When we look at it in the CTMP, we're really looking at how does that facilitate multimodal connectivity? Are there ways to get to employment and other centers besides just by car? And how, how does that access look? I mean, that's really the fundamental thing that we're evaluating. But what we look at is the framework of what exists and what is planned. We aren't making regulatory recommendations in part of the scope of work that we have now. That's certainly, it's certainly something that our work could inform later. But our focus is making transportation recommendations based on the behaviors that are induced by those land uses. And we know that changes in land use can have a big impact. If we have a multi-use area, then we can Jesus. I hate technology.
I'm hoping.
I am here.
Oh, okay. Well, well.
Take everybody in case she's still talking to let her know that she dropped.
Yeah. Yeah, I think maybe if you, she was gonna go ahead and introduce and hand that over to you, so maybe we can just continue this.
Sure. You should just say you have an area where
He'd identify himself also. I'm, I'm sorry. Victor, let me just introduce you. So Victor Dover from Dover Culp and Associates.
Okay, thank you, Twee. I think what Claudia was about to talk about was how when you have an area where there are more, there's more variety of uses close together, like housing and shopping, working, so on. Trips automatically get shorter because some of the trips can be captured internally. And we can replace some long trips by people driving alone with shorter trips. And some of those trips can be walking, biking trips, and others can be transit trips. So the, the effect of land use is very powerful. It's been said that the best transportation plan is a good land use plan. The county's been aware of this for decades and has been incorporating those ideas into the comprehensive plan, as have the municipalities. So that's not news to any of you. There's a design factor to this. I'll just use one simple example. If you have a street that has a sidewalk because someone said, we gotta have a sidewalk to make it a complete street, but it doesn't have street trees, so there's no shade on that sidewalk, it's unlikely that people will walk. So getting the details correct, like tree-lined streets where we want someone to use a sidewalk or a safe place to ride your bike if we want them to be induced or encouraged to move around without a car, that they can do so. And the, that combination of land uses also requires design because people want to have the tranquility and privacy and limit the negative effects of having something near them that is alarming to them in whatever way. But most activities that we do, like go to a coffee shop or get an ice cream cone or egg McMuffin, or take a kid to piano lessons, are not really noxious industrial uses that have to be segregated from where people live. So that, those are, those are the ideas that Claudia was, was acknowledging. Now, she was about to get into the slide that's on the screen right now, which says what the master plan will and will not do. And she was explaining that the, the plan will identify some ways that land use can, can be thought about, modified in policy to support better transportation outcomes. I think this is levered, leavened with a degree of realism in that we have, we have a county now that largely depends on, on car trips and single-occupant car trips in particular. So those are going to be there. She also acknowledged the, the limitation in the, in the small number of east-west corridors, which means, trying to put it bluntly, but some of those roads are going to be congested at peak hour from now until the end of time in one direction. And no amount of road widening would ever solve that, maybe just induce more of that travel. So we have to start looking for, as growth occurs, a larger percentage of the users to, to make short trips or walking, biking, and transit trips, a larger percentage of the time. That's where land use comes in and can be very powerful. There is a tool envisioned in the master plan that we create in the upcoming phases to assess how development aligns or doesn't align with the transportation recommendations in the, the plan. Claudia's also very quick to point out what the plan will not do. She's not going to zero in on a close-up area and recommend site-specific land use or zoning changes in, in the unincorporated area or in individual municipalities. And she, she's made it quite clear, the intention of the master plan is not for it to be used to deny projects. The Florida statutes permit you from doing that. Looks like Claudia might be joining us back on. So let's let her get her mic and camera working and I'll have her jump back in.
Can y'all hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah. Okay. Can y'all see me? I can't. I'm sorry, I do not know what happened.
I narrated the slide. Just saying.
Oh, sorry, I didn't catch that. Were you able to address this slide or, I don't know where y'all lost me.
I just narrated this slide, and so if you take it forward from here to the end of your presentation, I'll help, I'll be around with you, Claudia, to answer questions in any way I can be helpful.
Okay, wonderful. I think this is our last slide, actually, so we can move to, we can move to questions if folks are ready for that.
Well, thank you, both of you. I think, I think the takeaway that you're trying to tell us is that while you can lay out from the information you're gathering right now, it's really just a guide. It's not, we can't tell anybody how they can zone, how can they, or how they can rezone. But you're trying to let us know that there are going to be certain areas that no matter, no matter how much capacity we build, we're still, it's still not going to be enough because the more we build, the more there'll be, like on our east-west corridor. So we're gonna have to try to figure out better ways to move people east-west. But I have several lights on, so I'll, I'll let the commissioners have a crack at it. Commissioner Woodward, I think you were first.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, WSP, for being here today with the update. I just wanted to know, could you go into a little more detail on the online tool that was in, I think it was the last slide? As I understood it, and, you know, in early discussions, we were hoping for something similar to like a digital twin so that not only us, but all of our municipalities in, in the school district or anyone could use it to even run simulations before, you know, zoning or comp plan changes or when projects are coming to us. Can you go into a little more detail on that, please?
Sure. So the tool that we envisioned would be available publicly for folks to look at the data and recommendations associated with the land use that's existing, right? Existing or planned, so consistent with policy. And then it would overlay the transportation recommendations that are put forth in the plan. So right now, it isn't, what is scoped would not be elaborate enough to run a simulation, per se. That is something that's possible with additional resources. There are lots of tools out there that do enable that type of thing, but this would be a little more static so that you could pull up recommendations specific to an area. It just wouldn't be an analysis, a new analysis, per se.
Is this something that can be
If that makes sense.
As we are, any of our cities make changes to their comprehensive plans?
You could upload changes into it, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to add, that is part of the deliverables, that there's gonna be a portal that the various cities could update their, how we get the simulation, how we get the end data, that can be discussed as well. But yes, the portal, it will enable various cities to upload their updates. That will continue past the adoption of the plan. And if you go on the website, there is a unique tab that's set and ready for that. They'll have to find the programs that is gonna be available for that and really that could, you know, further and implement the plan. So that has been envisioned in there as part of the scope of work. But we'll work, we've had initial meeting with our ISS and GIS team as well as to what software and what program to be utilizing, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Weiss and then Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and, and the updates. My question's similar to Commissioner Woodward. If we're not gonna have a, if you're not, if digital twin is not gonna come out of this, then my question is, are you gonna be accessing real-time aggregated data as to what our existing conditions are? And how's that going to be utilized?
So the information in the portal, you know, will be uploaded, so we will upload existing conditions. It just, it will need to be updated manually. It won't, there isn't sort of a real-time connection in the background that would update the existing conditions, but, you know, a staff person can go in if there's a, if there is a change, you know, as things are updated and upload that change, if that makes sense. So the latest information can always be added. It's just not something that would dynamically happen without that data input.
So I'm still a little confused or not, I'm just, maybe I'm not asking the right question because I don't think what you addressed was what I was asking about. Are you gonna be pulling actual data from some source that aggregates what is happening on our roadways as, you know, now?
Yes, that's what we are doing currently, is aggregating data and then leveraging
You're aggregating.
A travel demand model where we will use that information to analyze the current conditions on the roadway, project those into the future. So we're looking at the year 2050, what the conditions will be then, and that's what the plan recommendations will address. So yes, we're producing all of that as part of the study. It's just that the, the portal that exists at the end of the study will reflect that analysis. If it, for maintaining that with changes afterwards, it would have to be updated. Does that answer your question better?
So what, what period of time are you getting this, this traffic data over?
So our base year data sources are, the, the base year of the model is 2024. There are different inputs. It depends, there are multiple data sources, right? So most are within the last couple of years, 2023, 2024, and then we forecast to 2050.
So, okay. I mean, things, I mean, things are, change here are changing very quickly. So 2023 looking like 2025 is very different, even in two years.
Sure. So we use, what we use is kind of standard to the, the transportation and traffic analysis practice. You know, they, we don't always have counts from every moment in time, so we take the latest available, then there's often factors applied to account for if it was 2023 versus 2024 and things are different now. There are always factors applied to that. So that's how that's typically canceled.
Right.
We use the, the latest and greatest available, and we do understand that there are frequent changes. So we've taken the latest available and then leveraged the tools that we have, the regional travel demand model with the latest and greatest base year. So, and a lot of the F dot data, that's 2024, so that's the starting point, and then we can use factors to update it and then forecast into the future.
Okay. All right, very good. I, I'll, I'll save those questions for another time and not hold up the rest of this, this board on that. And then I guess my last question as it relates to future technologies, you know, to what, to what end are you going to be able to sort of try to prognosticate into the future in what, you know, based on what we're seeing, you know, in development today? You know, I mean, I think, I just read an article, GM is going to be releasing a self-driving vehicle in 2028. Obviously, you know, what are the impacts of those kinds of things? Are you, you know, are you contemplating, you know, those? Are we talking about drones and, and, you know, looking at things that might be happening, you know, in the next 10, 15 years?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, as things develop, of course, I mean, it is a little bit of a crystal ball, but there is a lot of great work and research that's already being done, and there are even interests, of course, at the federal level when we talk about things like drones, you know, FAA, advanced air mobility. There's a lot of analysis being looked at to be able to leverage that. And then to analyze how it might impact the system, there are some emerging ways to do that in, in modeling. And then we have to think through really larger impacts. If you have drone deliveries, for example, that might redistribute something that would otherwise be in a vehicle or on a truck. And those short trips are impacted, so we can account for that. And we also need to plan for that because it changes the need, the needs for sort of curb delivery, for example, or even curbside use, which a lot of people have dealt with in recent years as it relates to e-bikes and other, you know, Lyft and Uber drop-offs, things like that. So it is quickly emerging and it sometimes evolves, even in the short period of time that we'll be conducting the study. But we're able to look at the work that's been done to date and best practices and make sure to address that in the plan because we know that it is critically important to everybody in the county, and we will continue to incorporate that moving forward.
And then my last question is, is are you gonna be making any recommendations in regards to planning on how it might help support alternatives?
The alternative technologies?
Alternative.
Is that what you mean?
Alternative mobility, alternative ways of, I mean, for example, I'll give you, you mentioned one, for example, deliveries, right? People didn't plan for how much deliveries we're gonna, we're gonna be having today, right?
Right.
And so buildings are not, you know, designed or, they don't accommodate those vehicles at the level that, that they're being utilized today. And so that creates additional issues on our roadways because they stop on the roadway as opposed to having any place to get off the road. But in addition, though, there, you know, in terms of if you're, you know, you wanna consider having some kind of enhanced transit or something else, it's gonna take this level of, of density in order to support it within this, you know, this, you know, range of, of distance if you're gonna be able to support these other modes.
Yes. That is one of the core things that we will be talking about in our policy and recommendations is density's relationship to transit and other, other modes and how you can accommodate all of that together. And that's part of the curbside challenge that I was talking about. It's part of designing for all users on any of our roads, sort of context classifications.
Thank you.
That will be addressed.
Claudia, I'll just add that we like to think that walking is not really an alternate mode of transportation, it's the original mode. And when you think about it that way, human beings have been building communities for 3,500 or 4,000 years in the way that we think of them. And during that time, technology has been changing constantly. The, the new, new things are always coming and always coming on the horizon. So one of the best things we can do is set our communities up so that they are flexible to adapt over time, like our historic cities have, have been, not, not so much the late 20th century suburban sprawl. So looking back at those historic cities, they have a few things that are common despite the fact that technology has changed again and again. the fact that technology has changed again and again, like interconnectedness, mixed use, walkable streets, some of the other details that we spoke about earlier.
Thank you. Commissioner Weiss, you're on. Okay. Commissioner Sacks, then Commissioner Flores.
I'm so impressed by my colleagues because this is such an important issue. And each one of us has cogent issues right now. East Boca with the whole Save Boca dot, you know, is it dot org that they're moving on and as well as West Palm Beach and what's going on with development. Victor, we could pull you up again. And Twee, you have been working on this for many years, I know, because Victor Dove and your company and his company has been a part of our transportation planning for, is that true? Is that?
It's really the, Victor and his company was involved with the Ag Reserve Master Plan, but not the transportation.
Okay. Well, I know that.
We've done some street design in the city of West Palm Beach. If you've seen the Clemata Street makeover, that's, that's a back east thing, maybe working on transportation related.
So they have other clients in the county that they've been working on. That's what, not specifically with the county.
That's right.
But other cities.
But that company seems to know us pretty well.
Yes, yes.
Know the county pretty well. I don't know where that company is based, but I've been very impressed with, with his analysis of things. And, and Twee, looking at our 39 municipalities and the issues that they all have with transportation, this could not be more important. So what I would like to do is make sure that, and I'm really talking to Mr. Rutter, make sure that we have another, another chat with, I don't know if, if Victor Dove and his company is involved in this as well as with the transportation, the CTMB. But I think that based on the interest that we have with our municipalities as indicated by the, by my colleagues, I think it would be wise to have an update pretty soon to address what Commissioner Weiss was talking about with which data is being used with regard to future of transportation here as well as with the other municipalities that are on the east side. Because as was said here, a good transportation plan is a good planning plan. You all do the planning and zoning. I'm not, anybody take that away from our, our staff. But it is good to get a bird's eye view of what's going on in the county. And, and as Commissioner Weiss indicated, what will happen in the county with new technologies. I think that's vitally important. So pretty soon, when we can, I'd like to have a little update as well from Dove Company as well as the CTMP to see how they're using the data so that we can help our municipalities as well as the county. Thank you, Twee, for all the work you've done on this. Thank you.
And just as a, maybe as a segue as well, we will be, you know, we listen to the, and get feedback from all of our stakeholders and we adjust, you know, additional meetings if needed. If there's things that, you know, the stakeholders, as late as yesterday, if they need more meatier presentation contacts, I know WSP and their team has been very responsive to us. And, you know, with the next couple of months, they are going to be looking to do more technical related, you know, meetings with our stakeholders as well. And I can probably turn that over to Claudia to, to kind of describe a little more about things that are coming up.
Well, I think though, that what Commissioner Weiss was talking about is hard data.
Yes.
Okay. Not necessarily. If you want to come out and hear what people have to say about traffic, you're welcome in my communities at any time, okay? I'll be in the back of the room though, because they have opinions. Now, I think you've reached maybe 1,200 people. We've got 1.5 million people in this county. So I think that everybody, if you ask anybody in the county, what the number one problem is, it's going to be traffic.
Yeah.
And you are right. Right. So I know what it is. We don't need to have more public meetings unless you want to. What I'd like to see is what Commissioner Weiss is talking about.
Right.
For this company to look at hard data, and I appreciate that. Thank you. I'll, I'll turn off.
So they will be doing technical stuff with the technical advisors. So I should clarify, so I'm sorry if I didn't.
And Twee, if you want to just update that we had a meeting of the technical advisors this week, you want to just?
Yes. So we did have the technical advisors meeting. We heard them clear, very clearly. They're ready. They're ready to roll their sleeves up and do that. So the WSP team will be looking, as I said, in the next two months, working with those technical, the engineers, the planners, you know, MPO. That's, that's the stakeholder group that I was referring to, not the public, really to the actual professionals that will be working, you know, and also the business community as well. So Claudia can probably go into a little more detail, but what's to come in the next two months as they dive down into the data collection and getting input and doing the modeling for what they will be able to recommend later in the spring.
Thank you very much. I don't need any more talk about it, but it's, when you say it's done, it's going to get done. Thank you.
Commissioner Flores.
Good morning. I need to report. I have a couple of notes here, but I want to start with the comments from Commissioner Weiss and regarding data. You know, when you create a master plan and you're creating the modeling, you're relying on the data. So your, your report or this master plan, it's only going to be as good as the data that we're putting into these modeling. So we have to really make sure that we're using the latest and greatest because if we're using data from five, eight years ago, you know, we're already eight years back. So we got to make sure that as we're going through this process, if we need to do traffic count or trip counts, especially at peak hours, we, we're, we're doing that. Because at the end of the day, we don't want to be behind the eight ball because we're using data from five years ago. A question to you guys is, as you're listening to some of, of the municipalities, some of the constituents, our residents, how do you plan to resolve conflicts? Example, we, the data tells us we need to move people either through, through a specific place or faster or whatever it is, but yet people don't want that. Is that, how are you going to make that recommendation? Is it going to be based on data or is it going to be based on people's? So how, how are you guys looking at, when you're creating this master plan, how, how do you resolve these conflicting parties?
So to your point, we do use the latest data that we can possibly get our hands on and.
I understand, I understand that you can get your hands on, but are we going out there and are we getting the latest and greatest? Because if we can get our hands on something that's five or eight years old, we're already behind the eight ball.
Yeah, nothing's five or eight years old. So if I did imply that, I, I did not, I did not mean to do that. But, and we do have a detailed data methodology that I think can be, I'm sure can be provided once we get that finalized with, with you all, Twee. Perhaps we can provide that and that includes the complete data methodology. But to your point, the data really is, these next two months with the data findings, that's the most important conversation that we have with stakeholders because what people want and the reality of what is needed to address the current situation can be different, right? So we provide those facts and our recommendations are based on solutions that can address those challenges. Now, are we going to be able to get everyone to agree 100%? I mean, I, I know y'all work on issues like this every day, so that can be challenging. But we provide the data analysis, we show the impact that the proposed solution can have. And then I think the fact is some people might love the recommendation and, and some may not, but you try to get to a place that everybody can, can buy in on a consensus plan.
So you're going to look at data and you're going to make the recommendation whether people like it or not because that's what the data said?
Well, no, we're working collaboratively with stakeholders and the community to show them the different solutions that would address the problem. But I, you know, we're here to make recommendations to you all as our client. We're certainly not going to tell people that they have to do something, but we will share those facts and make a professional recommendation.
So, help me understand. Are we saying that if people don't agree, then we won't recommend it? I'm, I'm trying to figure out if you're, if you're going to give us the, the hard truth. Even if people don't like it, are you going to tell us this is what needs to be done?
We will give you all the hard truth, yes. But ultimately, I know you all have to adopt the plan. So we will give you all the hard truth, yes.
Patrick, do you want to say something?
I just want to jump in on that point if I could. Yes, you will get the tough choices, the tough information. It's there. There are areas where you could create solutions that could create capacity. There are many, many areas in this county that that opportunity doesn't exist. If you waved a magic wand and you built roads where there's not ability to do it, it would solve it. But that's not realistic. You're going to get the right blend of tough prompts to you that are realistic as well, having worked with stakeholders and presenting it to this board for you to help direct us along the way.
Okay. Thank you. Regarding future technology, I, I think that's something that needs to be embedded throughout this entire process. I think future technology makes things more efficient. However, it's not going to change congested roads. So that's still going to be vehicles on the road. I think what will help relieve some of that is alternative modes of, of transportation and adding more connectivity and redundancy in our, in our roadways. I'm a big fan of overpasses. Reason being is because you don't have to sit at a, a traffic light. Every single morning, I, I get on Southern and I go over three overpasses. I make it to Kirk Road, and you've heard me talk about this, and it becomes a bottleneck. I have to sit there almost out to Military waiting for that light to turn on Kirk. If you catch it between 6:30 and, and almost nine o'clock, you just, the, the traffic gets backed up all the way there. So I, I think that's, we got to look at things like this, like Kirk, how do we create that more efficient because that's all of the traffic from out west, from Westlake coming into the city, that's, we got to look at, at those bottlenecks like that. And, and the people out in, in, in Westlake, if there's an accident out there, they're stuck. So how do we create more redundancy, more connectivity to our network? I know it's hard, but sometimes these, these things have to be identified so that we can start working on, on a plan. Thank you for, for doing this. I, I look forward to, to working and rolling up our sleeves and I, I think we're on our way. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, 100% agree with your statement.
Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Commissioner Weiss, for what you brought up. As soon as he brought it up, I, I was curious because I use Apple Maps on my iPhone all the time. And even though I know my exact route, it's, I do that so I know what time I need to leave my house. Sometimes I need 45 minutes, sometimes I need an hour. And, you know, it's, it's very accurate. And I've been looking at it right now. There's yellow roads right now. There's a couple of red roads. Are you using any type of that? And the reason I ask is because I, I carry around with me, of course, I don't have it today, but it's a level of service roadmap for the county. This got red roads and yellow roads. It's laminated. I show it to people. And, you know, of course, there's always someone that's like, well, this road is not on your list and I'm telling you it's that bad every single day. For the past four months, it's a nightmare. Are we, are you using something like this right now as you do this study? Because there's a number of, of things that will not show up in planning. I mean, signalization is a big part of it. I've got train crossings, bridge openings, bad drivers, pedestrian crossings, school zones, road construction. There's a number of things that if we approve something in planning, it doesn't show up on any of that stuff. But it is the reality of people not moving in their cars. And, and to Commissioner Flores' point, that is, that's the goal here. And not, I know that there's people who want to get some people out of their cars and that would probably help, but people get grumpy when they're in their car, not moving on a road. They're parked on I-95 or they're parked on Southern Boulevard. They cannot get through an intersection. They can see the light turns green, but they don't move because the intersection's blocked. Those are the types of things I'm hoping for to get out of this. So first question, are you using real-time, the reality, not what, not what a traffic study says, but red roads, yellow roads, green roads?
Yes, we are. So one of the data sources that we are using and, and that's part of the team is Google. We are leveraging the data that you are in fact referencing. What they do is they, they have their own aggregate data, right? Because they own all of those sources. We do it two different ways. There's a tool called Replika that we use that allows us to look at the real-time information, to look at origin destination and to look at congested facilities, as you mentioned, at certain times of day. So that information is always available. And actually, that's a great reminder because that is one of those things that, you know, it's not going to be a year old. It's, it's real time. And we do use those, that data as part of our analysis. We're also conducting what's called a sentiment analysis that goes beyond just the real-time traffic data and actually looks at sort of the personal choice behaviors associated with some of these sources. So if people go into ways and, and choose to go certain ways or always mark accidents at certain locations, that information is able to be aggregated. So that's another one of our important data sources. We won't have that analysis complete until next month, but that will roll in as we are, we combine that with the tools that we use, the counts and the, the more static data, the counts and the modeling analysis.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Weiss, for that because I, I do think people will want to know that you're using like real-time, not, not what is in a comp plan that says should be, but, you know, the reality. Because.
Yeah.
That, that is, that is what it is. And all, and, you know, we overlap with each other in cities and, and the state roads in here. All this needs to be part of it. People don't care who's, who the road belongs to. They just need to get from point A to point B. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Baxter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for the information that you are helping bring to us. All of us up here have expressed our concerns with the roads and the infrastructure and how we should approach it. So this master plan is hugely helpful. So I just want to start with saying thank you. Also, every district is different. So you'll hear different things from different suggestions from different commissioners because whether it's alternate, alternate transportation or whether it's roads, lanes and so on, everyone needs something different. I will say in District Six, we have a mix of, we need definitely more lanes and more roads everywhere. I have residents who have some of the worst traffic congestion stuck. And they, they comment they have used repeatedly is stuck like rats that can't get out of an area. And so what I'm looking for when we get this is some alternate solutions to how to move them in the most effective and efficient way possible. It is one of the number one complaints I hear, traffic congestion. So where in high-density areas, the alternate transportation is an amazing solution for people who can use it. That doesn't always work the more further west you go. So I am definitely looking forward to seeing what this plan comes up with and some great solutions brought to us so we can also get input back from our residents. And to Commissioner Flores' point, you know, we will then have to say, this is what is recommended to relieve the solution, or excuse me, to relieve the problem. This is the solution and see what they feel about that and how they're feeling. So thank you for what you're doing today.
Thank you. And if you live in, in District One and you're on PGA Boulevard, that please, that stands for please go around. Oh yes, please go around. That's what I said this morning as I was waiting behind a lot of cars on my way to 95. But yes, you know, we, we are a county made up of private roads, dirt roads, city roads, county roads and state roads. So any form of communication, any recommendations are going to take all of those folks into effect. And I am glad we're into the technical stage of this and the technical information gathering and, and have all, brought all those folks to the table, including the school board. The, the school district was there at the first technical meeting. So we look forward to the information that you gather. Obviously, real-time, obviously, traffic counts that are current, not, you know, not two, three, five, eight years old. But some of those, and I'm guessing some of those are going to be supplied by developers that are developing properties right now. So that, that needs to be taken into account too. But I don't have any more lights on and I think, you know, we're, we're in the second of four phases right now in the transportation master plan. And just know that we're all always listening and always asking questions. So if you get questions from us, you'll know why. And I just appreciate you all being here. here, even though you weren't here in person and we had a little technical difficulty. Thank you very much for being here. And with that, I don't, this is just information, so there's no motion to make. So, thank you very much for your presentation. However, we have 4B2, which is additional planning services for the countywide transportation master plan. Because I think there was some direction at the last meeting. So, you were supposed to bring back some more information for us on that.
Yes, Mayor. We were directed by the board to look at other, within the scope, within this contract, if we could expand the scope to more, to do more planning and zoning related, you know, items for that. And Claudia and Victor's here to answer any question. But we feel that we would probably need to refine those additional services. Staff has already checked. And within the contract, we could do those additional services based on, you know, as long as we stick to the, to some of the items that are in the scope, such as what I've listed in, you know, making sure that there is things to facilitate less, you know, internal trip capture, things like that. But also to make sure that we can come back with you on the impacts on this project and the timeline. And then, you know, in those additional scope, we will have to consult with WSP as to what the cost is and how it's going to affect the timeline. So-
And again, too, as was earlier stated, these are recommendations. We can't make, I mean, this is, we can't tell a city how to change their zoning for this. These are just recommendations. So, I know that one of the concerns, really, I think the biggest concern was, we really want to just know where cities are going to add density. And I think that's the most important takeaway from this. Because if we don't know where they're adding density, we don't know where the pinch points are going to be. So, if that is included in the scope right now, I think we're good. But if it's not included in the scope right now, then we're not.
Yeah. So, Claudia, please confirm, you know, again, I'm looking at the scope, and the scope has been provided as a backup as well. There are going to be recommendations where you look at land use pattern and what is going to be resulting from the WSP's recommendation, how that's going to work as well. But there's also something in the scope that allows WSP to get to the hard, the hard recommendations for the board. Outside of the scope, when we envisioned this with the group of city representative, when we drafted this, we knew we were not the expert. And we built in, in the scope that the consultant team can also look at recommendations that are not, in furtherance of the master plan, that are not specifically described in the scope of work as well. So, they can bring in their hard, you know, hard recommendations for the board to consider. And of course, alternatives to, to implement those.
Why don't we look and see what the alternatives are?
Yeah.
And then, we, we don't really want to drag this out much longer.
Right.
And this has been long enough. And it's been a long time coming. So, I don't want, I don't necessarily want to see it extended in a timeframe. So, let's see what we can do with, with that.
Sure.
Okay.
So, the understanding is, let's move with this first. We'll do the report. And if we need to, we'll revisit that at a later time.
I think I'm, I have consensus from the board on that. Okay, I do. All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we're actually to the end of our agenda.
Do you have a motion to approve the direction?
Yeah.
So, I think it's more, I don't really think we need a motion for this. This is more just, just information and, and a direction. Thank you. Is that okay with our attorney? We don't know. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. So, we're now onto the comment section of our meeting. Anything from the Assistant County Attorney?
No comments.
Okay, planning.
Yes, quick FYI, we are working on another master plan, which is the Central County Economic Development Master Plan. Staff is working with the seven cities that are involved, as well as the district commissioner for that, that will primarily affect District Three and then District Two and Seven. I've forwarded some information. So, it's, we're in the early stages of that. And we're working with a lot of the economics folks, such as BDB, the HED staff, Jonathan Brown staff, as well as Career Source. So, I've provided some of the information that was given to us by Career Source. And we're also looking to meet with the school district superintendent to see what curriculum adjustment, if it's not already been, you know, worked on. Because that all affects workforce and how that will. So, please stay tuned.
Palm Beach State College also?
I'm sorry?
Palm Beach State College also, correct?
Yes, yes. Because we've identified, you know, certain contributors. So, as well as JFK Medical, that's in that area as well. So, this, the results from the master plan also will help, you know-
Guide that.
Yeah, guide some of the development there.
Commissioner Sacks?
I'm not sure if that was in a complete list, but would you also include the unions? Because they're always looking for, you know, assistance to become part of electrical, HVAC, plumbing, things like that.
Sure, yes.
They're eager to become part of that.
As we develop this scope of work, we will also go out to the various different stakeholders and industries and to, to make sure that they're involved. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Twee?
Anything else?
Anything else? Zoning?
No.
No. It says zoning director here. I'm just going by what it says here.
Yes, yes.
Executive Director.
No comments.
Deputy County Administrator.
No comments.
Okay, anyone from the board have any comments?
Thank you.
Commissioner Sacks?
I had a wonderful opportunity to meet with IRM. And they're going to be working with the president of the Alliance, Dr. Lori Vineker, and using her expertise and our native plants and making sure that this, it's like a public-private partnership. It's really at no cost to the county. But she's going to be advising them on some of the best uses of our native plants. And we have a lot. And a lot of them encourage honeybee propagation and things like that. So, I'm very pleased with that. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, we're adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Commissioner Flores.
So, I just want to say, recognize Whitney and the team. They did a fundraiser last night for United Way. We did the pickleball tournament. I thought that was really nice. A lot of staff, Team PBC, people present there. I am proud to say, I went 0 for 4. I lost all four matches.
But you didn't hurt yourself. You're still here.
I did not hurt myself. But I, you know, everything from my waist down is sore. So, thank you, Whitney, for doing that. I know that has an impact in our community.
Thank you. And just an FYI, we had Edison in here yesterday. He was adopted and went home with his forever family last night.
Yes.
We're adjourned.